Play back. Sort of this talk about the first. Was here. Um, I did so we've also been paying the same level before so. And English. It's in English and what it is assisting forms of your architecture. Um. So in that sense, with the same reform, same time, it's great solid. For all. Standing. So the thing was something. Presenting. She. Then we all preparation, then probably. Yes, come come last summer because. And then to 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 make it continuous. Uh, the work. She was saying, here's all this time. We use size of the larger with this. Uh. And. But when you had skin, the windows especially. E S knows um. Beautiful, so. It's from you started building the palace in getting everyone's need that says. That satisfying to be our scenes and effect on the screen also satisfying the uh. The the reviews. And so, hey, it's a good compromise solution sort of all this um in the. Oh. Great review.
For you to clarify, we we get along with the assist as. And we will go again.
Okay.
Okay, um. Now, this one wants to have a comment on the side of that. It's not us, people who want to speak.
You received no speaker card to light him.
Hmm. Okay, thank you, David. Okay, um, this uh, we need to motion to close the moment in uh. Or should we decide agenda? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, right now, it's time for discussion. Question. Answer. Question.
Jerry.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, here is the architect. Uh. I've been all the things to work with the job, the rhythm is we don't have. So I don't really have. Quadrants clean, it's simple. And I certainly see everything moving forward to. Who else to give that a note from?
Okay. All right, great, I'll I'll make the motion and we uh go ahead and approve the uh. Motion for us here uh. AR twenty three oh one three, use permit twenty three. Well, second, greatest people, please.
Sheriff, man.
Hi.
Commissioner Beasley.
Hi.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Did you bring uh push your left back? Good luck for your project, David. Give it always. So yes, sort of pendulum of your presentation in Monday, if you want. Yes. Six B, which is one oh five real day. Uh. Architect will be permanent twenty three oh one five, permanent twenty three oh one four. Of staff presentation. Christine, again.
For second, I approve tonight as a rest of presidential edition one zero five pavilion way. We're looking at A R two three, excuse me, architecture issue credit two three dash zero one four. And east credit U P two three dash zero one five. Again, to give some context, one zero five pavilion way is in southern cul-de-sac of pavilion way. You know, long standing, you see our avenue. The lot size is over five thousand six hundred uh fifty nine square feet. And similarly to the last item, this one, this we're in this building nineteen forties and nineteen thirties. The door versus photos are the subject property. You'll see that the house has an existing detached one car garage with a paved driveway. Um, and you see the green outline, that's where the detached garage is to the way that we're aware of the property. Project tonight is going to be a six hundred fifty six square foot addition. The first story and then new second story of seven twenty one square feet. The number of veterans will remain the same, but we're also seeing added home office, laundry space and being near and large kitchen. In addition, this project also includes renovations to the first floor and the addition of a hat second story. The perks required for this target will be an architecture review credit for addition exceeding from thousand square feet. And use permit for two reasons. The first reason is that this condition is increasing gross floor area by over thirty percent. And the second reason is that there are second story rooms are not meeting our prescriptions, terms of setbacks, uh, so all over that. So we are. And as highlighted here, we have the addition in yellow, excuse me, we have the existing home in purple. And we're living in the garage in red when we addition the yellow. So a lot of shopping, um, but. But what we see is an expansion of the gold footprint. And we're building up out similar to eleven seventy three. Right, we're going over the coordinates, so showing existing and proposed. First, what we're going to be first for, and here are some of the changes. We have an addition in yellow. In purple, we have the renovation to the kitchen, the bathroom and the living space. We have the stairway in blue. And that the existing core plan, we are removing that garage here and shows you outline how to do in category. Like I said before, there are many red renovations to the first floor, which include an adding bathroom, the closet. Third bedroom. Um. And the large amount of the kitchen. Okay, I will try the second floor space, we're going to be another bedroom. Another, see another bathroom, that home office area. We have the addition in yellow. And the blue stairway. Moving up to elevations now. You'll again, what we're looking at, we are for the mobility footprint, so we are going up, we are going down. So the most prominent features here are going to be detached, two things, detached garage, the rule and. How we attach garage. And here's a look at your bare property. So once again, that addition is going to be tough, comes about. Now looking at the left side elevation. I've highlighted the green windows that are not in our descriptions, I will go for that in the next slide, I just want you to get a sense of where those windows are. Okay, so. Uh, second story windows, well, people are applying. Uh, this credit. Uh, pursuant to several useful code. For any second story windows, you are looking for these next story. And your neighboring properties, and your neighbors have a side yard rated in centric. When any second story windows, you're going to be above five level homework crossing. If not, then that means with both of these current processes, so this is why we're here tonight. Um, first reason, first reason is that some of them are not fair, so they're not above my level. Second reason is that there's no place, there's no crossing, so these are just plain uh bare windows. So we've got a subject lot in the red outline. I've highlighted where those second story windows are going to be in green, so it's kind of small, um. Showing again. And then in blue, I've highlighted the ability to side yards, so as I mentioned, if you have neighbors with over ten feet in side yard, that kind of poses a privacy concern. Um, in terms of our our useful code. And so. With this credit here is for those windows, um. And our. Our inclusion of that even better windows are looking over these side yards. The the use of these side yards are different than what we would expect, so. On the left hand or one on one pavilion way. This is going to be a left. All right, that user, it's going to be the left hand to the left hand side of one oh five. So thinking, so that space right now is going to be a clean driveway and it's a detached garage, uh, we don't see. We don't expect any privacy concerns and you, you're in, we've got confirmation from the applicant. Uh, we spoke with the entire nation, there's no problem. So it's kind of seen, so the right hand side at one oh one pavilion way. That's in that tenth foot side yard is essentially. Their front yard, their front lot, and then a little bit of. Drive space between the house and the side yard. So I highlight those to that ten foot center. And bundle orientation space, um, I don't think it was subject lot. And second side yard. And where those windows are going to be. All right. And based on some analysis, we're going to wrap up this presentation with a renovation as a final ignition approved, A R two three dash zero one four. And use credit U P dash. Excuse me, U P two three dash zero one five, based on findings one through eight as very released afterward. Through this item, we'll undergo the technically a field three. So we'll deal with the file and the city clerk's office with information for the permission's action. And that's all this item, go to deliberation.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff?
The the garage for me, that.
Yes. Yes, that was a preference that our algorithm um. Has shared with us for coming out, I honestly was curious, but it's simply more storage, um, it sounds like they had some friends of work. Where in this.
Uh, yeah, so like. Family gatherings, you know, if you have family in the backyard, you have that.
Very big one companies, tomorrow they'll lay away at the the party.
So, okay. Yeah, it's. It's a little, little unusual, sure. Yeah, I think, but the concern with that would be like, I know you have some issues with like not available vehicles, the yard that. Has like soil contamination concerns around it, but. You know.
And your questions or questions?
Uh, I have a couple, I'm just maybe clear each, so in the fact that overhead game, where you have two strikes and the shaded areas.
Yeah.
So it's it's because the. The uh, house to the right, the garage to the left are going through that. They're not ten feet beyond, that there's a privacy concern, even though maybe. Very. Very hostile house on the right. Not being set backs or decent performance, whatnot.
So our church mostly the the neighbor on the west side. So. Uh, with the detached garage. Um. We're going. Where you check, I'm on the corner, um, there we go. So, so the concern here is that they. Somewhat somehow in the future, besides the new back garage, and you use that as. Side yard or they can have a party kind of in that same street, in that same. And and space. Um, those those second story windows on the left hand side, whether you period there, leading to there. Their side yard. So. And I don't know if you can find me the second plane, um, maybe that way they're explaining it better. But to to your question, I think are the left side neighbors, not so much the right side, because.
It's because of the structures.
Structure, yes.
Those structures cross through that, so.
Hmm.
Okay. And then you have the. And the side by side of the floor and after elevations. Um, for the fronts. Uh, just want to make sure, it looks like quite a bit of. Increase in size, but really the item on the left, there's a detached garage we're not seeing here, right?
Yes, yeah.
And that is visible from the street?
That is visible, if we want to go to. Uh, first slide, so the green outline. It doesn't show the plans, but I guess there is a detached garage way back at the property.
Okay, so it's in in that sense, it's not a vast change in the street anyway. You know, there's a structure there now, it's just not shown in the drawing.
Right, so this is one of the veterans, yes, this is one of the veterans that are architect bias, so the garage can setback. Same as the detached garage, um, it's going to be a little closer, just because it's connected to the house, I guess it wouldn't be visible for the shoot.
Okay, great, so I have, anyone else? Okay, um, this is the architect or owner, like to say few words.
Will be joined by Steve.
Yeah. Beautiful, um, one of the reasons why the elevation looked massive. Because the garage on an angle and you're seeing an oblique view, so you're actually seeing the front and side elevation. Within that one elevation, so it looks, it looks massive. Because you've seen it on an angle, like if I wanted to capture the house, to get the garage, because on an angle. So I I thought about, do I not show that, do I show that, but I'm like, those. So I, I thought about, do I not show that, do I show that, but I'm like, those. Even though it won't be, I don't know. So. Got ten, 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 the one. Building that close to the window of the garage, also lay over. I guess there were some futures that. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for architects? No, there's shit. Okay, uh, it's like, I've been done their portion.
Um, questions, so we are joined by Troy's.
I just want to give a little background, that's a wonderful. Um, we lived in ten years ago, my wife and I, little kids in the house, we want our family to grow in the house and stand it. You know, and when you can't see in the pictures, that, you know, because I know there's lead paint underneath the layers, or. Overpainting, and the garage was tilting, and there's no insulation in the walls, and we just want to update, but it's better to. Be able to look at it all less than me continuing to patch and fix for years. This is fine. And. I want to update the status of neighborhood. It's been, you know, seven year, five years since. Um, the house has probably been, again, updated. And, uh, I did talk with the neighbors on the left and right side of me, and in the surrounding cul-de-sac, some circle part of ten, uh, so there's no issues then. I understand. I remember doing my homework, I put it both. And best of, best of these. Down, if I can, if I can, question possibly. Thank you very much.
Very appreciative, thank you. Okay. Just we're going to go to, uh, public comment now, just I have anybody who wishes to speak?
We've received no speaker cards on either.
Okay. Great, um. Does anyone who wish to have any comments or wishes? Does the project further?
Share what they can. It's like just saying that the, the ten foot step back. Is a concern because that area would be ten feet of open yard space, isn't yours person thing that would be me, like, like a private activity. And you have the yard, the party, Sunday, or whatever, it's cool, that's good. Um, for the neighbor on the left hand side. Um, the garage, whether it's there, is there, it seems to. Not pose any privacy concerns, but if it. Same removed, the problem would be replaced with a garage, same size or larger, in very similar location to you, so. I know first time, privacy concern about that some.
No, I mean, so the name. I thought the privacy concern was the other property.
Twenty three seven four, and you spend fifty point three zero one five, based on, uh, I may as well say.
Second, could we have a little, a little, a little breeze?
Chair Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner BSO?
Hi.
Commissioner Harden?
Hi.
Commissioner Luthy?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. Motion passes.
Great, thank you, best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, we're going to agenda six C, which is. Another volcano. And, uh, there should be a side who's using himself. Um, this is for, uh, used for man twenty three zero one zero sixty five, don't need to help the other staff, patient on this.
Let's see, if it was, we know the word, alright. This credit allocation at sixteen hundred Alameda. This is used credit two three dash zero one one. Sixteen hundred Alameda, Alameda real, they're located at. San Diego, San Diego Avenue, Alameda now. This one in MXR district, which is also known as the Volta family, from letting progress. Don't look at it, an extra part of the parcel map now, so you'll see that the subject lot. Uh, excuse me, the building. However, most of the subject lot, the subject lot measures eleven thousand five hundred and ninety square feet. And we'll go over some, um, we'll go over some of the buildings of the subject property. You'll notice there are two cottages, first one is going to be on Alameda, that's the main street cottage, but the second is going to be on San Diego Avenue. Constance, we pass a photo of the surrounding properties. Um, just, this is just some background, across the street is the city of Millbrae, so there are some buildings that line the city, but it's of Millbrae. But on our side, on the east side, it's in December. First project, it's going to be a use credit operating supermarket in MXR zone. When you see that, or if you're into your. So we go go why a use credit is necessary, um, this is kind of the general breakdown of our code setting here. So, San Diego municipal code. Section twelve point eight point four zero nine defines supermarkets. Type of retail sales and services. And because the team are developed. First, we try and the MXR zone, its uses and billing have the combined standards in that zone. Because retail sales and services are in conditional use in the MXR zone. That means that only conditional use credits, excuse me, any conditional uses, you need conditional use for. Um, conditional use credits are featured in the finding commission. So the next request is for immediate condition of use credit approval to operate a supermarket in the MXR zone. So let's move on to the site plans, um. The applicant has not those any experience changes to the building, but the main teams are going to be on the first floor, they'll take a look at that next. New coolers, new towers. Fish tanks, there's going to be a space for meat and fish service, that highlighted, it's going to be at the top of our, our site plan here. We've got new fruits and vegetables section in the flavor. New fish tanks and a lot of creatures on, in, in the rear of the property, and it's completely kind of an floating side, that's highlighted in orange. And in green, you have new card shelves and coolers, that are, you know, it's a hard vehicle to come with. From here, we highlighted these storage rooms, and in green, we have enclosed garbage space. And here's kind of the general breakdown of what is available to the top layer. And blue, we have four thousand seventy six square feet of public available space. In the rear in pink, we've seen further magnetic storage and kind of employee area. So we go back to that last slide, a lot of storage is in the back of the house. And the garden is also going to be kind of behind where the public would, would notice them. Second floor, there's many, you know, changed cook codes at this time, so we'll just move on. To, to the issue of the pool, um, if you see that list, we're looking at number four and five. And so these are kind of our, our more important ones, reforming the renovations to the unloading and loading act to. So the applicant determined this new location of where that delivery effect will be placed, and that's going to be parallel to San Diego Avenue Cottage. So, this division that they cannot offer, they cannot work. They cannot unload in residential area of San Diego Avenue. And number five is that refuse to tears must have been walls of the building at all times, until the garbage is globally gone occurs. One of the garbage, garbage is global curse, one of those men is packing the building. Last thing, condition twenty one. Um, this was from our fire department, and they're requiring that the fire system be installed, based on these conditions. For any addition, alteration, or modification. For to the existing building, over seven thousand five hundred square feet. They are required to have an automatic fire extinguishing system. Still over a part of this year, we did receive a letter that is included in their packet, um, so it receives this afternoon. One of the concepts they had suggested that they had posed was, so. Uh, this is written by staff board as well. For this year, assembly bill two zero nine seven. Um, now requires that a local agency or local jurisdiction. They no longer require a part of the minimums for projects within, you know, five mile transit. So because this project is on the Alameda corridor. There's, it are well within half mile of, let me just say, transit line. So based on that, there's not a lot of things to do, based on the part of the minimums, or the requirement, this point. So there's some language from that assembly bill. And it's, it's close, the equivalent should be shall not impose or enforce, is the minimum automobile car, the climate funding residential. Or other developed project. The project is located within one half mile of public transit. And the bill goes into what, the definitions of a project, and it's very, very various. Um, I think the one intention is that. The part of anything but in hotel or, um. Transmit occupancy space. We can check the language out if you'd like, but. I think our, the direction of our statement is very clear, that there are no more parking minimums, or anything, we don't have final chances. So it's that lab, seven recommended when the finding commission, over two, two three dash zero four. Uh, so that's recommended that the finding commission approve, two, two three dash zero four. Based on the findings one through eight as written in staff report. There are pretty, and the other items, this item will undergo a ten day of field period. And it feels like we file through the city clerk's office, in ten days, they'll be planning to be back in. And that is all of this item, I'll turn to admission for deliberation. I think I may have gotten the use credit number wrong. Two one, zero one one, I don't know, but they use credit two hundred dash zero one one. Question, how do you?
Very sharp. Um, so. Having remain. How many spaces are there estimated along the Alameda Cottage, there, there, Irish, okay. Um. I don't know if it's possible to, I, I, I see a, just. Constantly cases of trapped spaces left, where things aren't lying. Which you may see that, that, like, five spaces turning into three somehow, because somebody's parked it, right? I, I wonder if it is possible to line the spaces. And that's, that's something that can be. That, that would help reduce pressure on, so it's, you know, if you have five customers there, like, they actually all fit, instead of one of them getting pushed somewhere else.
I think that's something we could bring up with our public works department, so, so those are conditions that is included about recurring to the market, remarking the curves on San Diego Avenue. So that's something that you want, you want to consider, we certainly have to learn by engineers.
Yeah, that what we're doing first, like, age is probably a pretty minimal additional expense, hopefully, um.
Um, I was hoping you could explain in a little bit more detail, garbage dumpster situation, I'm just a little confused by it, so.
Clear, so we had to be the applicant, which I was to recolony, uh, based on their, based on their cars, uh, one of their. Requirements inside base, the garbage inside the building. Um, now, if that poses a problem to business itself, I think that's something that we need to discuss. Um. But, but when we recall the contact that we have, um, that's something that we can definitely work on. If not, we should be like, some, someone's considering my reach. So always.
No, I agree, that if I. I'm just accustomed with commercial spaces having downstairs outside, or. On top of that, park, and so. I've never been, we, uh. But, uh. It was just surprising for me to see indoor. Garden facility. That one that we build out, having to see for the surrounding neighbors, when the. These are the studies were, you know, so I've learned that would be. I don't think it's, well, right out, well, right, I can already see it. But it's just kind of weird from a. New foundation in this place.
Um, there's, to answer your question, to, to partially answer the question, there's not a lot of. Space left between the building footprint and the lot that it's covered, um. Well, some, well, some are, I'm, I'm, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll answer that.
I, um, I talked to, uh, you know, uh, track and you, and I call, I'll review and. Uh, met into them that, you know, if you want to keep everything all, uh, you know. The supermarket, the market business, if you have a lot of. Cars, a lot of dry goods and things like that, uh, recycled trades. So I talked to her, and she noted that you have to have something, um. Uh, that is what, the ground part. Uh, sometimes you have, um, um, fish and things like that, that has to be put in the act there, and they have. You have a trash box, and you have a recycling lot. So in a powerful consistence of marketplace, you want to have. A. Uh, we've also got roller, uh, uh, containers, but we mentioned that we want to have, uh, we talked with the best, uh, uh, a big, um. Big container that is rollable and large. If you, in which center, you're feeling, uh, that whole plant, do you have a four plant? Uh, right by the left, left hand side, uh. Uh, there's a nice rectangle box, two of them, and one smaller one in the bottom, that's for the wet, recycle contract, right there. Then we also, in case of small items, we have about four or five or six. Small containers, now, if you look to the left, there's a large door opening. Here, a big door across the right of the building. First to move out, and, and you don't want to do all that, take outside a public. Driveway or anything else, and this is where the, you see over there, you have two parrots. Based on, one smaller one in the middle, one larger one for parking, we have parking and delivery trucks go in and out. Of, uh, that driveway, and the large, the smaller one. And, uh, the off, I would go forward to the side, that's for going in and out, and also making, you know. Uh, movements, uh, of, of delivery or things like that. So I want to package everything nice and firm, and, you know, easy for, um, the operation. You know, um, me, this is a family owned business. I have all the family, all, all the people, they all help out in the grocery, uh, business. Really have a supermarket for, prior to that, a lot of goods are from the previous market they've inaugurated inside the building for two years. But then, right now, in the sense that we provided more to the, back to the page, they're, they're, because, um. The mom, I would want them to be back home and want her, but. Uh, she wants to combine, be more closer to the family, especially the grandparents. Okay, you know, they have three branches here. Okay, so they want to come by and be closer to the family, you know, it's great. So this will be valuable, fighting, doing more in the family, and also really attending school and, you know, and that, that. So you want to make sure everything is, is nice and comfortable, not only the supermarket, but the environment. But, um, we have a couple, well, they, there are a couple. Community people who are involved in the supermarket investment, but they're, this is this, and they mentioned. You have a marketplace, they're so happy, it's a good moment, even if, uh, to go back and forth and shop and things like that. I mean, you know, I do that, it would be very nice and. That little place, used to be a furniture store. So now, the whole open area, you see it, is all open, and, uh. You see that, yeah, like this, nice open, and ideally. Put a market place in there. Put a marketplace in there and be there for people for and out. And then for the fire interest, I have the reason because in our, you know, for the exercise and things like that. Uh, so that's what we have here and we don't have. Like ten thousand per so, we only need four thousand and six hundred per so, it's less than half of the. Square foot is all bigger. And, uh, we have, they, I can, it's ideal, but this is a valuable thing. And then we also have accessibility for the restrooms and things like that and. And we have washing supplies and things like that, you talk to the health department and. This is what they want to have also, being with supermarkets and things like that, we can find them. So we had any more questions, do you think, unless? Uh, I think so.
Yes, and I think I would begin this, I initially also, I guess it seems sort of odd that, that, you know, that I think sort of. Standard layout, you all perceive garbage accumulated sort of at the X level, maybe like by the garage or something, but then, but thinking about it, um. You're right, if you did do your garbage accumulation over time way back, you'd have to walk all the way through, you've been, you've made many more longer trips. Whereas on this model, it basically haul the, you know, you roll everything out once a week. And in terms of the ongoing business, you're only walking shorter distance, that's probably significantly more efficient because, uh. Um, just as a general comment, you know, well, the neighborhood, uh I love having, you know, in a little corner store, I go to Mexicana Market in our downtown all the time. This is two blocks from my house, so more like that is great.
For several times, and have iterations where it was, seeing it's tall and have used inside entrances. Uh, and I give recommendation. In using a small amount for business and a larger amount without or that can, behind the same scenes business. I do invasion, I mean, artificial comfort, a proper way to connect the. I would call it pieces of that there are some sort of, your compost, your change, your recycling, your trash. And I'm, I would trust, except that we would need that with sanitary. Visions on that, we would need whether it's all dogs or stuff. But in Vishthan, deciding a lot, drop off service with less other types of things that's that. Level of, um, mechanics, those doors, and our numbers are yours. So welcome again, also, very kind speaking, meeting at my dinner. And she is already away, I will talk very soon and talk.
So I would like questions about, is the trash pick up really just once a week? For sort of storm and sun, daily or?
Uh, basically, uh for these types of businesses, it it can vary. Twice a week, three times a week, it it really depends on volume, so. Uh, the, that's what, for ecology, it's good with working with business, uh you know, based on types of containers they have. And, uh, their their needs and how much they generate, they. They basically, uh, set up a schedule that works, uh, for, for the generation rate.
What the typical condition, I I imagine there's gonna be more than what comes for, uh, they've got maybe three.
Yeah, these left out at like midnight, picked up at six A M. the next day or. Uh, I'm just looking at clarity on the, you think the schedule, we have, I have no idea what the schedule would be. Yeah.
What about, um, shopping carts, was that discussed, like who, how, where do they go, or can you bring them out? Bring stuff to their car? Is there a program that rip them back in so they're not rolling out of Alcuminia? That, uh, Jack?
That, that's a, that's a very good question. We did not, uh, put a conditioner on, relatively as that, so. If you're given the size of kind of urban locations, look to the, the market, uh downtown. Um, and some of the other markets, then it would be mostly, uh, smaller items, but. And then that would also be a question to ask that, and if they're, they'll just hand carts or. Or they will have carts that if they'll allow them to leave the store or.
Yeah, cause you know, a lot of these. Right, it's safe, like, no ready. All those, uh, shopping carts locked, not moving. Is there something set up here where, you know. They can become a nuisance in the neighborhood, kid left around, like people. We're also in the street with that brain kicking and stopping somewhat, uh those would be my kind of. Questions that, you know, hopefully they're, they can commit to, uh, maintaining that. Being a problem for neighbors.
So Chris, Wilson, would you, you were translating?
Little bit of that, okay, thank you.
Most of the items are, you know, that they have, they use small, uh, your roller for. And that's it, so I'm not a thing like this, so they can carry this and move that in. They don't have the large, most of the things that we have, you see it, we have all this drive in. And also practice, uh. Uh, items, you know, for, you know, the store and, and you also reset and came. Uh, carry but India. So, uh, if they do have any type of, uh, itemized, uh, drop off, we have two garage. Uh, open space area where you can have them drop off. Over in, for the victim of the year, when you try. You look at the, the whole down the path, the, the people off, or over. They keep the one that is on control with the T P. Oh, that they can do. Right, we do, I don't intend that to be, you know. What are people so.
Okay, so no, no carts outside, no. If you're, you're gonna have some kind of, you can carry a basket or like. Um beetle baskets, and you'll drag it behind you.
That's correct.
Would mention.
Same thing that they lose over when they have, uh, they have store outside of it. They want to come into there and cost time, and things like that, you know, you're, you're trying to do. They have a lot of experience with our cards and things like that, that's why we meant to introduce a good, after the. This is a small, you're driving, oh, we're not good to anything. They have that, you don't have a, well, they need a pickup point, you have a pickup point. Long, long, delegating things like that.
Will staff be, uh, like escorting people to their cars and giving assistance and then bringing the carts back, that kind of thing?
Uh, that providing, yes, how hard. You can, you know, whether or not, however, it's from my point, so if someone parks, like, is it parking would be difficult, three blocks away.
Pull that car all the way out there. Losing or any part of that?
Yeah, this is why, they're gonna do it, they have to pick up here.
So first, when you go to their car, drive around, you know, park, they'll bring.
I can see, then also you're gonna carry and move, like a lot of the, some of the way on bus stop, you know. You have on the side, you can see right there on the side, you put the lot in, and there's another side room that would help here too. But maybe go in and out, that's all, uh, the E breast store, go to the, the market. Uh, so then, on that street right there, um, there's no one make up attempt with the. About people driving, you know.
Can you bring us one, one, one? Where is the chapter of history, wouldn't you? Right, by the door or?
Uh, there's a main door, right, it's center up the top. And three door, and I have three, are are colleagues, those are your cashier talent right there.
Okay, so if someone has a large. Or maybe two or three baskets, choosing small baskets. Like they've marked, you know, across the street of Millbrae or over by the high school or. Need to give the food to their car, your employee will bring those things back to which roll up door, and where will they?
Downstairs, this is a lot, a low door, and then you have another roll up door in the center right there. And, uh, right, right over there, that's all, you know, movement in and out there. Either one, depending on what type of tour, things that people have, people can get all open right there.
Right, my concern is that, a couple of things, traffic backing up and pulling food in the area where there's garbage. Um, so which roll up door will be, you know, the one that would?
Well, that would be the middle one, where we have, uh, the, the, uh, the garbage, uh, recycle area in that task.
That's the one you proposed, you proposed frequently?
Those forgot.
The one to the door does that?
Um, right there, back of the roll door, and it's easy and close to the, the market. So you can go in and out, and all the containers and everything is all controlled, so.
Right, but they still be like flies and stuff, so do you guys have, yeah, like last, the articians don't hang around, at least, or?
And the rolling cart by, uh, the trash and you call it, it's, the metal case, that, that sound. So that's what they do, and they, they use that and they can provide that type of, of carters. And they want the two products that's in the ground. Recycled, you know. But we have, um, being when we call, we have a lot of, in the marketplace, you have a lot of carts. Cardboard boxes, uh, you know, things like that, to be recycled, that, but, it's, it's put in his way.
Is there any way of picking like the articians, kind of. Make it so you can't bring the products to the drop off spot. Going through the garage area, like you wall out the garage area, use like the middle roll up door only for trash. And the northern roll of door for delivery, so like the rear roll of door for delivery, so you never like mass through. That area where, you know, something could be changed.
Um, well, we would can do that, uh, but basically. Uh, I, I didn't want people to travel too long the distance they go back and forth. We own a structure very large, you know, it means a large, so it's big. And parking there and then going to the door that is like where, uh, the auto there, where the lot garage store is. That's a door there that goes in and out, and then we have the roll up door. That we can do in passes to, to do, you know, the trash, you know, the, uh, the, in kind of a. Um, old roll up and, uh, people coming in and out for the, for the supplies and you can set that.
Totally, I want to make sure that's my question, just, I want to make sure when someone's, where are they gonna, kind of, around the building this way and pull up. San Diego, double park, and then you will have some of these, their, their goods.
Yeah, I try, yeah, I have to talk to the people who are in, that's what they say, actually, those are.
Right, I get that part.
Talk with them, uh, and, and, but what happens, uh, uh. The two in one is accessible to, you know, like, you know, so, and gather, they're, they're, then you can talk to the. To the people there and they can tap on the goal, whether you're not off on, or, or, like, the world. Or even the most. That's a very, you know, an odd truck.
Every dog, it's, well, it's extreme where people drive fifty miles an hour or more all the time, and.
Yeah.
There's no market there, you can't really go to the market.
But they're gonna have bus stops, like, you know.
That does help. Yeah, I'll show.
So we're, we're not gonna use that, but it'll be good, so a lot of customers are just gonna take the bus to the shop.
Uh, question, how long has this building been vacant? You know.
I think are the most recent business I've seen show that the last business closed two years ago.
Okay. There's no architect for this, or anyone like figuring out like some logistics that, you know. As, as traffic, what did the potential backups on, San, or San Diego, or Detroit, or the other streets are?
So whatever.
Sort of, uh, something will be a lot of here. Essentially here, with only five street margins spaces. And, uh, the side street's gonna get impacted, it seems.
When we routed these plans to our public works department, traffic was not one of the conditions that they had applied. Um, we'll revisit that in the next years, if it's necessary.
Is, is there at all the park concerned with, you know, rolling? Stuff through a potential trash area? It's something to be like seafood and. Things like that, that could potentially could be. Handing to a customer, to a. Not the, the, the sales area, floor area.
Are, are you saying your question, um, at this point, we will not work with the health department for this use permit yet? Um, when they, and, and when they are part of the business license, you do have a business compliance inspection that occurs. So at that point, we would ask that, one, they get a billing section, two, your client's asking. And that's maybe would get that help from the county. Uh, but at this point, really, I'm not communicating with the county.
Yeah, you need to, an opportunity, um, as part of like a group in this that we made, uh. Based on diary and their generating, kind of show the path of travel of, you know, with, um. Great, so, uh, through, uh, garage areas, garbage areas. There'll be, uh. Your path of travels for the customer with their cars, I'm not sure if, if, you know. North of Alcuminia, and you ride and see it back to the spawn, or be, be coming in there, U-turning. Um, Channel East, largest street stream. Side street, so, um, if that's possible, I'd like to. Okay, so, I'm gonna just probably go ahead, but I have a message, this, this, that. Help, help the partner. Having diaries, kind of illustrate their process would be, you know.
Food, food, or the health, that, just looking at the diagram, if you essentially took the, the trash segment. And rotate it at ninety degrees, so that it was flat along the wall, basically with that fish tank, so I would give you more clearance for the area where they're proposing to.
Right, right. Getting, I'd say you can partition it off somehow, but still get access to, yeah, or for their trash. I'm thinking with three roll up doors, size, so.
Yeah, if you, if you rotate that, you could bring that straight out of this door, kind of, food out the northern.
Right, exactly. So, I don't know, people are following along, but I'm just showing you that green area, not the edge, you know, the block wise.
Exactly, and that pushed it down, so it's against sort of back to back with the wall and the fish tank. And then you would have more clearance to bring the food out of the northern door and the trash out of the southern door.
Right, and then you could build a wall to the north of that, or some kind of partition where people could come from the sales floor. Right outside, roll up doors to the north, that's not midway. Building, right, so that's, that would give you a nice barrier. Get rid of that, buy a crew of efficiencies as well, uh, with day to day operations.
Can you share?
Yeah.
Uh, on that point, I. You're from a utilitarian standpoint, that makes a lot of sense, but I don't know, we are. Getting so deep lots of kind of the health department's been focused on, but it leaves a nice suggestion. And if not, going to, the health, uh, require, like, you might be doing certain. I just don't understand the relationship with the process of how this goes with planning, and then it probably goes to more specific. It's maybe more of a sketch than it is. But it's brand.
Yeah, typically, there's a, uh, kind of a parallel process, so while the applicant has submitted their. Uh, plans to the building department, plans.
Uh, plans to the building department, plans, they also submit some of these plans to. The health department and the health department, this uh, plans. Uh, first, and this is the same for a restaurant or. I've used, and they basically have to approve the the building permit and the general layout. Um, of the of the plans, but you can certainly reach out directly. Uh, to the health department and, you know, ask the question. Uh, you know, as part of the, you know, the the plan review. Uh, process. Very, very.
I'm sure. That's great, because I hope they just gesture and. Um, and then, um, related to the parking and the traffic, um. My understanding is, and from looking at the format and knowing this space, this is not size of the state. This is not. Of all the stones, this is not the largest, it's like more like the little restaurant market, this downtown is a little bit more like. Things, um, Millbrae. It's it's a smaller shop where I don't think we're just gonna see a lot of coal. Going in and out as far as like, maybe some people hide like giant rules, you can really look for it. You know, twenty four packs and needing to to have a party lighting in than the ever having. Um, my understanding, just my experience is where people bring items or it's affordable, so it's for daily needs, every other things. Um. I think it's good, it's thoughtful to consider, you know, somebody who has a larger order and needs to park or pick it up. To think about where they may go, so they don't block the neighbor's driveway, so that they know. Double park and indeed, the the basic practice. But I suspect that this is going to be. This is more smaller scale than like official or, you know, super, you know. Local work pickup sign shining.
Director.
Uh. And it'd be really nice to kind of try to find a dedicated space where uh. Customers could pick up if they can't. Say, take it to their car or have a holding part, you know, allow people to carry their own personal holding parts and. And, you know, throw it on back home. Um, on us. So, you know, maybe. The loading spot, the loading zone that houses the trucks or the garbage. That would also be an area for people who can get groceries on the side or even get. Sure, but we'd have, it'd be really nice to have more. Confirmation that parking. Parking starts with.
And if you're kind of, the space in front of these roll-up doors, that's not parking, right, because it's in front of doors. But that means that as long, right, like you could pull up to pick up groceries in front, directly in front of the doors, the space is there. So. I think that as as long as. That flow is not like, as long as there are so many customers wanting to do that in a short period that they back up, which seems pretty unlikely. Because like most customers will just be walking out. And taking, you know, taking a small order, as long as you don't have two, three, four big orders all at once, that seems like it ought to be. Manageable.
And to to answer your question, uh, one of the spaces on. At the front of those roll-up doors, you've got yellow curb marks, if that just.
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
That's right.
Sorry?
It's not, it's only loading.
Yes, loading, yes. So at at stages where maybe you have a customer with a larger border, it'd be a good spot, good spot for them. Um, and it does comply with our condition that we want. If any loading activity to occur, it must be parallel to San Diego Avenue and have this immediate uh, frontage. Thank you.
Good, Chair.
Yes.
I'm in support of Commissioner's license uh, comments. And I think in order for this business to be successful. They are in business and we want them to be successful and which is really impossible. However, um, part of it will be uh, quality of products, possibly specialty items. We sell a cost better. And customer service, in that line, I don't promise it in. Customer service. And I would have to rely on the experts of the business. Not of those businesses, you create the customer service and coming out of the front and walking along the side, but creating a way so that they, the customer. Has accessibility to do whatever way possible. I can't imagine. Running this sport in place, not having a customer service as the number one concern and agreed up. What you would want to do is a factor. One threat. And um, and as Commissioner Redden indicated, you know, Deans, Trader Joe's, a lot of these cat and market accounts on three. They are dealing with some engaging cases. Um, so I think we have, you know, there's different sizes of business. This is, you know, this is. How long, the bigger the sample, not long, so. I'm I'm in a position to um, appreciate all the questions and think that was. To create. Body, run that needs to be your opportunity. And to be the enhanced expert and trust that they will, I mean, fall into a bridge that they will go and hit that. Big results out and you will be seeing compliance in every step of the way. My expectation. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Um.
Uh, one one question, are you guys selling alcohol? Still. No, okay, this is the one, I think there's two other stories for us to treat, I was trying to, sure, we're not. Um, and uh. Yeah, um. Here's a comment for the lower. Comments. Is there anyone above who wants to speak on this issue?
Um, yes, through the chair, we have Heidi Patterson. Uh, you will have three minutes to speak, um, you could start once I put the timer.
All probably be longer, like it's. Um, we'd be able to, if I have family or friends coming over, we have a job for snacks, and again, I understand why with all of them. But we're gonna be impacted even more with. Approaching, right, you can you can say it however you like, it's gonna bring more. That's real, that's real, that. We've over the years have had a lot of problems with, I think it is the number of pedestrian nights now, right, I think. So people, it just increases, that investment increase, I would like to know, when the hours are on thirty. What what hour do we operate? I did have a question about. I'm gonna please, I'm gonna be working in the facility. And where are they going to park? It's not just the customer you're talking about, it's you, right? Um, there's already been blocks running along the streets. For the last week that I know, because I. Just got window, I mean, we got our notice last Monday, right, so then I started noticing, there's already a block, I understand that. We also have a issue on San Diego and that area. The first and third, Wednesdays and Thursdays, we have, we have street ban. Okay, so like that, you can go down our street, you can see everybody has tried, they should go, we're gonna be fighting that for a while, for a while, for. I mean, there's always question. The deliveries and the little park, I don't know. They all sound a bit off the paper, whatever, I can tell you, I've looked at them long enough to know. That garbage generated by any uh, tenant in that building. Is even the furniture store, they go plastic bag in the other, my yard, I am concerned about the waste. The garbage and it's not quite on the day, and if we're gonna end up with garbage, that's another thing about. Um, what about, you know, to be impacted? People pull up, I don't know, I need to go to the grocery store there, okay, that person getting ready to leave, just turn my way, wait. That is anyone back up, well, trash, you know, I may not be able to get out on that, and my other, you know, bits for next. Let's, oh, because they're gonna be blocked. It's another issue like that. Um. Uh, oh. Because we have so many restaurants. On, oh, you know, anyway. On the weekends, you can hide that. There's none of my neighbors fucking on my house or anywhere on the other side of the street, okay? These people also, when you want to turn around, they even go sideways and turn around. Um, it really becomes kind of like, I don't even have people block right. I am in. Um. Now, on our side of. San Diego, I think now they. Usually get more of about seven to nine cars, if everybody parks correctly, right, and I'm taking that lots of space on our side. On the other side, you might get seventeen to twenty, but. What is this written on? Were they not, is because it's gonna impact them, people will be parking with, 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 you know. Really small businesses trying to survive, I would think about that. I mean, that's that's kind of boring, uh. And I would love to see. Garbage reset go out from the people leave that property, yeah, and it's true, because I guarantee people, people have garbage all our street, all, all. And they love to just work out. In my. Oh, my God. So, I would time out, time later, okay. So those Chinese are, thank you for listening, um, I wouldn't like to say that this was any further. And it is approved, I told this, that you would put it in the public council, whatever, not really, but how this work. But if it is approved, not have any issues. You guys, the city and police department will be here, and I have a topic to use as well. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Uh, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak?
We have no other speaker, Cars.
Okay, you have a motion to put this vote in comments? I think.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah. Alright, uh. Any questions, and any you like to make, any comments, like motions?
Yeah, I'm gonna, with our. Commenters concerned around parking, I mean, we are explicitly forbidden, so considering parking as an issue by state law because of the proximity to transit. Um, I would suggest the speaker might want to look into the residential parking permit scheme. In terms of the 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 spaces. In the residential side. Um, beyond the frontage of the building on San Diego. Um. The way that program is designed is a whole other. Kind of a fish. Um, but, um, you could talk and staff, but then. There there is some potential for protecting your. Residential parking spaces from commercial customers. Um. I also, I I'm I'm sympathetic to the the suggestion that there should be a waste bin. Exterior buildings, so people buy a snack and chips or whatever, they don't just throw the bag on the ground, that's, I think. That would probably be a publicly administered bin, that's something the city should probably be looking at, whether. We, you know, we've recently got this new design for bins in downtown. Um, possibly it would be appropriate if we could look at deploying one. In this area.
I think for any efficiency, anything in the public right way would have to go to the public works first.
At least like.
Been appropriated. You know, like we confused. You know, I, but the only concern is I don't see that the city would be. Uh, a lot of service, if if that was a requirement, we would. Uh, we would have, uh, basically that would be additional service, the city would grant any punishment permit, but. Uh, it would be, it would be the applicant's responsibility, it's amazing, and I, I guess I could see where, you know, a location. Right next to the door, I'm not sure. If they have an inset off the front. By the front door, if they have any space to to put it there, just have it be part of the. The business or have a. Container right outside.
I got a utility.
There isn't, yeah, there isn't inset, so it's like.
Yeah, potentially you can't put it. Oh, yeah. Be right over there by the door. But could, it could work, I got it.
Um, hours operation, that's just flipping through that, it was, is the, let's go, this is the building division hours. Noise level, uh, Stan, do we have any?
Yeah, on page two, the Fed report, it's gonna be studied for about the one hundred and four pages. The hours of operation for this market are gonna be ninety to seventy. And they expect six to seven employees to work during those hours. It's gonna be second paragraph under project analysis.
Right, thank you, yes. Second, mission on this. First, such sort of. We'll never leave that board that marks out. Hopefully, part, square letters. By this. Or then form. And said to.
The trash containers on like San Diego Avenue, by those service files, senior. The versions that are beyond the street, the concrete ones, you can insert them, maybe you have a team.
Those are, you know, ecology is our provider and the city, uh, that's part of. The service that the city pays for.
I know the words, and what streets, my, that's ecology.
Yeah, so, uh.
Um, is there any opportunity to, when with the partner? You know, you're extremely well, so. I understand that, so is the apartment. Um, could there be any of that angle part when it happens and you're from. Broadway, Avenue, Millbrae, so, you know, that yours. Method to that, but in. Design, like if there could be some thought. Um, because I don't hardly have all of this. Just this particular. All of my governors is a.
You know, it wouldn't be peaceful on El Camino Real, which is a state highway, that you would lock a travel rate. And unfortunately, if you got San Diego, the only way you could make that work is if you were to. Switch it to uh, a one-way street, there isn't. Yeah, it's it's a narrow street.
The street across the way has those angles, but it is a wide street, it's hard line or hard place.
Yes, yeah.
So there's, so like, we should create ones that. Not the interstate, you know. But what's the. You know, some of the state prison cell, I'm driving over getting. Many creator of open opportunities, it's looking. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um. I like the fact that this is not the time either, but we all know artists who send primary units. So that, so much concern, you know, the health department. Um, prosecutor divisions to. Do what we can as far as like a precision by Christian Harman's, please markers on the pavement to. You know, delineate parking spaces, so. You know, we're doing the best we can to make sure all five spaces, the rest of the space that are added to utilize. Whatnot, it's. It's a difficult street for those speeds to go in and out. The large building, ten thousand square feet. Had previous tenants. Man for the traffic, just because this is a grocery store, I don't think we should analyze them, because, you know. We're gonna be using cops more than Salvation Army or whatever they're for. Um, so I hear the concerns, I definitely did see that, but um. I don't think it's ever. Perfectly analyzed this business. Happened to be a grocery store. Excellent. Seem to be using. Less than fifty percent of the space they could, surely tell if they wanted to. So I think, uh. I would make the notion. For this, with conditions that are those. Is not reviewed by other uh, city and county provisions such as the health department. Greg, take a vote.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner Harman.
I.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Leithy.
Bye.
Commissioner Johnson. For zero motion pass.
Okay, just before we, sorry, just before we finish this item, there were three considerations that you had wanted to pass on to the advocate party. This was to consider the path of travel between seafood and products for customers. The second one would be to consider a partition between the roll-up door for, for the customers to find us between those publicly available spaces and their private spaces. The third one is for the marking of those five spaces in front of the store along Alcindor Real.
Correct, the, uh, I didn't realize the middle. I thought it was another bowling ball, or perhaps it's the altar company, or just for the garbage portion. It's all soft everything.
I see.
And if we're bored, we set that on for the. The regenerating garbage out on cultural, you know, to be for customers, we have that, you know. Part of firing, so the interior, council, right? So that was going to be, to study those kind of concepts.
Yeah, really, the goal is that you're not rolling customers' cart through an area where there might be a still of whatever.
So those are three, am I missing something that could I? Oh, okay, of course, and then, uh, Michael Lockwood had mentioned the potential garbage cans on Alcindor on, in front of their business.
I think there was some consideration that it might be kind of in that little insect corner outside the door. That's not something, so if, if customers have smaller puzzles, it's.
Thank you.
Great, good luck to you guys.
Thank you, thank you for answering all your questions.
Okay.
Good night.
We're gonna start the review from, yes, uh, pretty, pretty. This, this item is kind of very minor code amendments. That were reached to you, um. Uh, I'll be going over some background, just a quick summary of each of the amendments and find any with the recommendation.
Part of the series of amendments that we just talked about, this staff will be bringing forward, uh, supply efficiency council after the next year. Um, and we've got three different kind of categories of amendments that we're thinking about. Uh, the first are these minor amendments, and these are just, uh, kind of more cleanup items where we have established had some challenges with various, uh, sections of the code and which I'll be explaining. Um, so these are very minor in, in, uh, scope. Um, the second, uh, and for the first one, we're doing tonight, uh, we're just bringing in directly to the planning commission uh, for consideration and our expectation, city council, well, the city council adopt them. Um, the second is the profit amendments, which, uh, that one's a little bit more involved. You have, uh, your study section with, uh, the city council. And so it'll be, it'll take some time to actually work through that process of having study sessions with planning, she's state health for that. And then we have, um, all of our housing related, uh, amendments and some other, other amendments, different plan uses that we're anticipating as well, that would come later in the year. And so, as I mentioned, there's a minor amendments, just think that we get started. Uh, the first one is just adding a couple of definitions to our code. First, um, is we, we use the term lot coverage in our code a lot, and we really don't that for it. Um, the challenge is typically with, uh, it brings that, uh, protruding into the side yard or uh, coming up to a side property line, so we haven't really defined what lot coverage is. And so we're going to define it as a structure that's over, that's a and that kind of structure is defined as something that is built, uh, that would be over one feet, that is high from or extent like that. That is, I think, to construct a, uh, foot, but, so there's anything that is accurate, just then a fourth concrete, uh, walkways, brings on that confidence and loss. Uh, second, and it is just adding a definition, the veteran area and the tree. The second is, uh, and set back with exceptions, the visit kind of also to be asked on the lot coverage. So projections in yards, I'm adding that any projections are, um, are also, and you can, any traffic fun for. But, you know. Rigs, portions, vets, stairs, or those sorts of things, we use that fun for better. Um. The many codes, uh, in many jurisdictions, ones that I've been in, um, allows flexibility on what is, uh, what, what, how you determine yards, what's the front yard, what's the side yard, what's the rear yard? Uh, so our definition is the, uh, shortest distance of a looks through, so it's into the front yard. So, uh, I'll, I'm going to give an example here of just the need for some flexibility for the community development director planning measure as part of the consideration of the project that sometimes it's better to, to, uh, look at it a little differently in terms of how you're finding yards based on the existing, uh, physical arrangement structure. So this is a house owner on lots of apartment covered room. And so, um, this is typically where we have, uh, the most issues, and we've had issues with people wanting to do additions, but it's been problematic for them to do additions in the location, in locations they want because of what is the finest, their practice, that side yard, and so, and these lots are almost square. So I, I just was easily able to pick this one up, and there's, you know, even in this neighborhood, there's uh, many more like it, and you'll notice, um, just this, this house on the park is built at the same time as all the others on the park. So the front doors on park, the garage is on park, all the halls are lined up along the park. So here's just a, a real view, um, of the house. Uh, this is the, the actual lot. Unused public right away, so actually, so actually, five top deep backs that aren't property line. And so there's, uh, it exists in the structure, like a garage on the right with a five-foot side setback, but you would think would be a center side setback, um, joining the house, so the matches. Again, it, it relates more to the property, how many homes. Uh, so however, our code says that, uh, the side street is, you know, through what that is.
I'm not just.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so on Chestnut, uh, is it, Chestnut by Narrows, so it's fifty-one B for their, for, for the radius there, and then on the, uh, park side, it's sixty-sixty. So we would divide, um, Chestnut as the front yard, the purpose of applying setbacks. And again, our code doesn't offer any flexibility in this style. So when you assign those setbacks, uh, fifteen foot price, the ten foot here, five sides, and the ten foot spiritual side. Uh, this would be the bill, billable area, uh, that. So, and that also leaves then, exists according to the moments that would be considered continually not forming. So again, in the event of a fire or other needs of your play, then kind of deal with well. How do we, how do we look at these portions of the building, um, as they relate to where could find the setback? So here's the alternative, so there's a lot in the house, then the general setbacks. So this is, this, if you were to reassign the setbacks in, in a way that the house was designed, the tenants originally, um, where it relates to probably have neighbors. Would give the set back, hard, pretend for next year, the side of the road. Chestnut, and then the ten foot, the rear yard is adjacent to the neighbor behind, and then you're by the side yard, you base it to the neighbor next door. That's the house, whereas, like, all right. Here's about two plus mall approach, and right now, that continues to set that. That's, but I don't, I don't have, part of the existing setbacks. It all will allow for some opportunities, uh, for additions, um, a small addition towards Chestnut in the back or a small addition on the front as well. Um, so that, conversely, is reassignment setbacks. Um, the net, the next proposed, um, well, I guess maybe, you know, crap. I guess, well, I guess that was one of the more intense subjects it was, so maybe I'll just pause there. Questions, the. Missions, yes, another, um, example that we did not bring to you, and some of them repeated at the architecture committee was the new, um, open end of the extension project at my name. Um, Alcindor Real, right, three-way on the, the, uh, apartment building. That one, that it was the architect that did the right thing and applied a ten-foot setback adjacent to the, uh, residential behind. However, based on our definition, you were, uh, had forest lane in the front yard. And under the T O B, something kind of zero for the side here, side yard adjacent to those residential properties, which, um, it's problematic, so this, so there's a number of applications for changing to those things, which the device does still.
I don't know, so the fact that the town. That's, so. Drive right on that street, and I'm calling for that, mainly because, um, that doesn't define this front yard necessarily the current.
Correct, correct, exactly, it's always, it's strictly defined, no question, that's the shortest distance of a street, which is chest that. Despite the fact, right, despite the, the physical layout.
I lived this for a long time, consulting. We wanted to expand, it, it was in most known hospital, that is very sensitive. Oh, great.
Yeah, this change would cut back on the potential number of variances being applied for, is that?
Uh, correct, it actually, people don't apply for variances because you just, they just, they just are similar, right? And so the mention is they're just designed with factor they can't put they want.
That's just, the common camera, they just have that, I mean.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the next, um, uh, change we're recommending is change to the M one, uh, zoning, the light industrial zoning. Um, so one of the things of the code does not address are, um, what to do with larger properties, and specifically we have the Amazon property, which is the, uh, the, the large, well, that largest property adjacent to the tree there, um. And so, uh, you do have a proposal incident in for that site, and so the, our, our, the zoning is really set up based on, it's the very small, uh, like industrial businesses that you have there on memory. Uh, so this amendment would, uh, on, on sites more than in bigger insights, allow for a increase in height up to, from very high feet to fifty feet. But it would also require a use permit to owner house and distribution of list uses. So right now, those are permitted uses, and we have homes out of it. Uh, this is to recognize the fact that the upside is that they're size, there should be some review by at least for a, for a larger project, like this, that, that it's probably best not to have it be here. Just a flat out limited use, the only architecture you require. You know, and in exchange for that, would be additional A to the B, um, that can often be required. And this is also within our general plan, and it's, it's true, the current law, it's all very different, so. Uh, you know, I hope it'd be, if, if there were, um, a number of lots of projects, you know, were put together and assembled, uh, for a few views, um, that they would allow, be allowed to also do, there's just a, this. Um, parking this, this is, this was, um, you remember for, for, for the San Francisco Avenue, this was the, um, the assembly use on the second floor of a gay store, um, where, um, the code required endless lines for, uh, new facilities in place of the worship. Uh, the code said one, one space for, frequently for your floor area, which is comparable to retail, like a retail use, and the, for assembly uses, um, and well, and this is, this would be somewhat throughout restaurant required, just one space for every one hundred square feet. But for, so the real, that would act in more, there are no error, um, when our, is only restricted in one, one, one. Finally, we have, uh, our street improvement section, so our street improvement section uh, this includes, uh, a very rigid table of sidewalk width, which, um, that would be applied for variance, I said, of subdivision. And so this will allow some flexibility, uh, for, uh, different types of on the streets, um, alignments and configurations, especially, um, you know, it could allow for, you know, you know, or travel lanes in favor of wider sidewalks, bike lanes, so, um, you know, with these spinfield sites, there's, uh, typically, or can't be any for uh, just some flexibility on the street standards plot. So, uh, this, in this specific case, uh, for the press war project, one of the uh, things that's getting looked at, and I, I apologize, it's a little hard to read, but, um, and there's again a rematch, um, both by the city, um, the, uh, developers who do, their particular parking um, along Portland to provide the necessary parking to support, uh, the future art that is planned for the space that would also be used, uh, probably for soccer uses, like, like their field is now. And that's the only way to provide parking. Uh, we have a very similar, um, situation, like we did on Cherry at Admiral, we've got a car, we actually have a particular uh, parking along, prior to that part. That's why, so this again, just allows for a little. So with that, um, the recommended ordinances that are sequent, um, we're recommending that we adopt the resident chain, recommending to the city council amendments to the municipal code. As I mentioned.
Any questions? Yeah, um, so in terms of discussion with my daughter this weekend, why didn't you for the veterinary?
Something specific, well, it's not, yeah, it's not in our code. Um, so we had a situation on San Bernardino Avenue, um, with a, uh, it was just an architectural permit for, uh, the but it's effectively a veterinary use. So we allow head wording as a use, but veterinary is not listed as a use, so which is very unusual, so every, every municipal code, and we have, obviously we have veterinarians in the city, so it's just do, it's just to, to recognize that you still had, was always the.
Right. Um, we, we also have a existing distinction, there's be like hardscape and absorb it, and when you were bringing up decks, I would make you wonder like it like, if you have a, a raised deck that sort of pillars, and then it is still, um, soil underneath, so that's, and that. Uh, like, I'd be like, well, are, are we counting on coverage, just completely the hardscape, or whether they take completely separate calculation?
Uh, and we, we kind of, we struggle a little bit with this. Excuse me, internally, yeah, so if it's a. Excuse me internally, yeah, so if it's a deck and you know, it's got. It's got dirt underneath it, it's got to use how much water to go through it. Um, you know, then it technically is, it's it's not an impervious surface, you know. Uh. So, or you know, if you've got a second floor deck, it's. You know, dirt underneath it.
Yeah, I like I'm like, is there a like, is this a separate calculation, lot coverage versus the hardscape versus previous?
Yes, lot coverage is is a separate. So yeah, that's separate. It's a separate and it's it's much smaller, so. You allow eighty percent previous um. Previous surfaces um. Uh, I'm sorry, previous services, twenty percent previous. Uh, but the lot coverage is uh is typically for five thousand square foot lot. Only about twenty seven hundred square feet. So actually, that was one of the. Items will be written back to you as we were looking at uh one hundred and ten percent of. For if you're for your lot coverage, if you're saving your lot coverage, because we have a number. Uh, proposals that go to our review, that exceed lot coverage. Uh, because our lot coverage allowance is so small. And so what that effectively does is it almost forces people to do same stories. They're trying to avoid lock, although. You know, we're they're not processed, you allow. To the upper you finish to request. And you're uh there's a lot of, so we do have that place.
Do the chair. Um, it's hard to look at the one with the three. And I just, I keep going back to still the house on the corner, the front side, my side is the front, we can't build a thing. Um. So it's a good job, but um what we did run it to when we were sitting there, we didn't build, we needed a more. Just usable space, so we'd be able to do that. And you can say, say, so important, and it was, it was danger from one foot to three foot. And it just says anything like that's super limited, and one foot above there is considered block coverage, especially it's. Okay, that just seems awkward, well, so in my mind to be. Considered block coverage is at one minute. You're in love.
Yeah, and the reason for that is both for setbacks of the market and this and where we have. The most challenges are for down something lots where people are trying to create level spaces. And they're proposing to put um you know relatively high. Uh, raised decks right adjacent to the property line. That caused, you know, caused privacy impacts to the neighbors. In addition to that, God, um, the situation with the building, you know, this will allow you to build. Embustible construction um data, at least three D. Uh, there, but they they don't require permit for anything um. They only require a permit for a deck that's raised for. So there's no. Between trophy and free that free freely, there's really no. Uh. You know, no, no way of of us being able to, you know, uh, look at these structures. That they have in, you know, it's pretty significant impacts to adjoining neighbors, particularly on slow situations. Where people can. Put a raised structure right next to the fast. Artificial raised right. So.
Those go need to have. So they even had the city small home. And then they want us to envision. And maybe go over the.
Well, the other, I guess the other thing, the thing about is is and we and we actually help. Help out because um quite a bit, so you can. You know, do, we had a a situation on a house where they have front stairs, we allow uh, you know. A pretty significant raised front porch, so they needed stairs that were coming down. Uh, to the front yard, but they were going to be uh. Exceeding a limit. Uh, merely allow impression to the front stairs within the fifty foot setbacks of six feet, so you have to be nine D. Uh, basically, you know, stairs that are accurate. So we basically worked with them, kind of a combination where they took out. The raised stairs that came to. Uh, you know, the six feet encouragement that they had, but they had a transition into something accurate to get to the side. But so, so we help people with those creative solutions.
And I haven't seen lots, I haven't heard of it, perfect for routine wall or tech, plus the three feet on the ground. With that. They can all just. Makes first by the perfect. Also, it's very common, which, yeah, a lot more expensive, but can you go?
With the reverse to add one, so we can fly to rain, we encourage um visual together. That's awesome, you've privileged. All right, the larger scale. Alright, focus.
President Shins, okay, so first I I guess the college, there's no one who's going to spread, yeah, it's been a little. We don't have a comment since there are no T Ds here, so we move forward to. Uh, special. And like to contribute comments from the motion.
Yeah, okay, if we already gone over our issues, uh, I'm happy to do it after we.
Here, Matten.
Hi.
Commissioner Beasley. Commissioner Hunter.
Hi.
Commissioner Latine.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next is uh June nine seven. Study session. Uh, I made a safety element study session. So there is a. Yes. Such a no no uh. Decision is required from the planning commissioners for um. This information is second only. Um, yeah. So I'm just going to give you an overview of. What's he opposed for the I P H R state of the elements or private schedule. Community engagement overview, next steps. So, um. The internal. Uh, city project team is led by Michael Smith, is our project manager for this. Um, Ari Delay, our fire chief, the police lights, our fire marshal, our chief are. Good uh, good to be direct for public works. And Jeremy Brandenburg from Police Department. Now, let's see, I have a good fat. Sure, um. Oh, I mean, I call here. Um, I think I do want to mention. That um. And this is in your staff report, why kind of why we're doing this.
Try again. Try again.
And then, um, anyway, um, the the saying. This is a collaborative effort, so um you're required to update our safety element because of. It's very great, so I apologize.
What slide do you want?
This is the first one.
Okay.
Right, please. This is required to update our safety element, especially without data about housing. And to do it ourselves, it's been extremely costly. Uh, standard consultant sent to do it, that's by ourselves. So uh, the county um. Twenty one elements and uh. San Diego County came together, we we created collaborative. Um, there's several jurisdictions that are involved. Uh, they put out a. Request for proposals and successful. This font was placed works and they have some 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 insults that they'll be using. Uh, to put this together and a very much reduced cost to the city. And we're going to get a much better, more robust work product, which is a city. Uh, and you know, a much larger project that's going to include many more cities, so we're excited about that. Um, and funding was given by the city council for the hundred fifty six thousand dollars. It's budgeted for the next two years to prepare it. Okay, so I say the element is amended, a great part of the. Uh, general plan that identifies conscious concern related to this community. With health protection, you can be a good stand for these other hazards. Um, our existing um general plan is how they do this done in two thousand nine, so a lot has changed. In the area of uh. Uh, safety and uh fairness uh for uh safety. And of course, a lot has changed the environment as well. So um, so it's a good, good opportunity to look at um dating what we have. Uh, as mentioned, it's required uh with the housing element and. It's like it's required for also under state law or incorporate the. Uh, multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan, which I'll touch on in a moment. Um, ensure that there's a few of the other general plans. The other plans and it will enhance uh the city's ability. And eligibility for grant funding and also the public supply of the safety decisions. So they there are numerous. Uh, state laws that um come into play, um which um. I won't go through all of them, but um there's essentially four state laws that. Place requirements on um. The uh jurisdictions to prepare a safety element, what to include in them. And um particularly, it's the housing. Want a good safety element to. Ensure nowhere in place housing. So forth. But I did want to touch on. Um, our local hazard mitigation plan, so this is a countywide plan. It's last updated in twenty twenty one. And um, again, we're very fortunate that San Diego County took the lead on this. And um, it's a, it's a, if you haven't looked at it, it's an interesting. Uh, plans to look at is on the San Diego County website. Um, and it defines measures to reduce this from natural disasters, it's required for female funding. And grants, so that's, it's really critical. That we have this um. And the adventure memory is the way this fund that we simply have a plan in place. And um, but part of it is also, as the name implies, it's a local hazard mitigation plan. It's to look at vulnerabilities in your community. And then try to do something about them. To prepare for what may come, so uh, so that's where the grant funding comes in. Unless there's a bit of a problem. I mean, as you know, San Bruno has a lot of hazards. Uh, the San Andreas Fault, that runs that by Skyline, uh. Um, wildfire area. As well. We have uh flooding, sea level rise, that would look action, which is high water there. Um, and cause damage to structures from earthquake, uh, we have landslides. Now, we're going to warrant a drought, heat, and others types of severe weather. And you can. Cause damage, which is as strong as we had last year, uh, so there's, those are the primary ones that I see. There could be others as well. Um, part of what. Uh, the first steps in the safety element process. Is uh the consultant currently working on a vulnerability assessment. Um, and this is where uh. Our community assets, asset that may shoot affected by climate change and it. You know, and also informs low impacts time change um as well, so um this is the effort that's going on right now. Um. So, uh, the project schedule, that's an achievement, it's going to take about two years, so um. The consultant has to file background on on hazards, uh, that's, it just about ending now. Uh, the vulnerability assessment is just getting started, it's from now, so June. Um, they'll start looking at. Creating goals and policy programs, that'll be March, September, twenty twenty four. Um, the actual preparation of the safety drafts of the safety element and. City of San Bruno will get its own meat. Um. Safety elements that will slide into our existing general plan. And um, then that obviously requires for review before we adopt it and then also. Uh, state and local agency set up rules, so that brings us out to June. Five, there will be really be um stakeholder engagement, that's also. This part of it, that's also being run by. Uh, the consultants as well. Um. There's some of the community engagement activities, including workshops. Trying to uh. Get to hard to reach community groups and. And having stakeholder meetings, um. Doing a mapping tool, survey tool. Um, and this is where the planning commissioners and council come in, there will be uh study sessions. For the planning officials, the council, and then also the whole experience, the final talks and. The dialogue. So again, and uh currently compiling data. I'm sorry, the data on passengers and do that status, uh, they're also. Creating a G I S database and. Then working on the assessment. And as I mentioned, Michael Smith is our contact. Uh, as well. So with that, all we have any concerns.
Very good, you, um, well, this uh. Could assume this is it, which is given out there, the trouble is to leave a race to get fired. Lots of board. Uh, right now, that's very good, that's ours. Half my room lost power for a week, so on the bottom here. Maybe that starting fire on my whole neighborhood. This is like. That would be part of this.
Well, I'm glad you're mentioning it, I'm like. Sure, it it is, but we'll make sure. Okay, it is, because I can pass that on as well. And um, to make sure that they're looking at that.
And then, you know, I've always wanted this, you know. In earthquakes a lot, but. A lot of the side effects of earthquakes seem probably. See publicized, what I'm really concerned about is landslides, like the fetish. Is there any maps generated to public to go? Landslide zones can be treated by living valley, have positive place soil. Or, sorry, um, lots of clay soil on a hill. Earthquake patterns or. Cold on rain. So all that stuff would be conducive map form for the public to absorb, yes, yes, in our existing. You know, in our existing uh. Safety element, you have the, you know, landslide map as as well, and that will be, all maps and graphics here, David. With the more current information.
This is the fire ingress and ingress for grandparents.
Yes, that that's a big topic. So. At least trying, uh, you know, being able to get our. Neighborhoods, there, there is a tool on, I think. I'll just go. Neighbor that the bet that uh. The fire department is using, they're basically. You know, they basically take a hazard and then talk. Previous, you know, evacuation routes for those. So yeah, so that, that's, 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 that's one of the big new requirements of of safety elements is have kind of. Maps, evacuation routes, so that will be a. A pretty significant topic that in the company, but that's, that's not included.
Um and then also, um just remind you, in the past, um. I I've had worst concerns. About prior convention, um in multiple areas, we have a lot. That's what there is, but. A lot of few that are, especially back here, the universe of months. High months, highs and months down, um. And the answer to the problem is that. There were different entities that were responsible, so everybody was playing. Not on the same page, I was. To care, we'll be evaluating. What different entities that used to be, we need to analyze. This is our damage to. Rest in peace.
You know, and this is a kind of a more little policy document, but I think it's probably touch on that. Because I mean, our fire, we have a fantastic fire department and fire marshal um. And we. That's the. It was some bonus, I thought we deserved to pay, you know, it's this, it's a mission, so I know they work really hard. Um to try to, you know, to see that it's part. Uh you know, to use fire, but but you're correct, that we have these standing areas that. Right, this is this claim. Uh. And they're difficult to access. And there are different made them involve.
But especially these. Even though it's with different municipalities, perhaps in each municipality, well, the question may. Safety plan, oh, I'm sorry, um. Elements, safety element, safety element. Yeah, it's the element. Um so just, okay, just. Couldn't, I just passed it all, everyone. Powers. These poor, waiting rights, so just try to. So.
Yeah.
Another good question, this document address teacher, we need to like fire. Staff, we've given that. If you have all these hopefully residential. Home family partners, that hopefully you have them in temporary. Just build a whole bunch of stuff to, it's gonna be a lot more people, same. Should we have like the sixty there a. Fire station, that's no way side it's flying. This document recommend like things like. They need. Actually, the fire stations spread around the city based on some. Housing element items that hoping to do, I'm not sure, you know, there's several separate. Members and studies going on at the fire department, how that they're expected. And uh you know, they're looking at. How do we compete our, our facilities? That is definitely. So. Private, definitely. Better for the. To New York Pacific. Assist us.
You have a question, your comments?
Okay, thank you. All right, uh. Next is item number eight. Nominations for chair and vice chair for twenty twenty four. Um. Do you uh chair first and vice chair or vice? All right, I'm gonna nominate. Go over. Chair has here, who's not here? He did, it's uh, he's on that, um. All right, see the both lines in that. Like, all right. And then um for vice chair, I don't know, I'll just give a second.
Um, yeah, okay.
For, oh, sorry, yes, I said. Great, so that's, that's uh. And then um for vice chair, uh. First, we decided it's currently set forward, uh and I nominate him for vice chair.
Hey.
Thanks, I'll see you. Hey, appreciate it, that should be a size, and then, yeah, it's been fun here to be the. Being chair at times, that didn't help. Okay, so that that business is closed, we're going to go to items for staff, the number nine. So if we're looking for volunteers, because they are simply. Right. And one of our last. It's January thirty, the month is eleven.
Anyway, yeah, so uh. Yeah, so we don't have any complex, but obviously in July as well, like now. Uh yeah, we, and we, uh July fourth was missing a. All the. Calendar and all for this.
Do we plan on having um? Like, I think, do you guys order these joint sessions or, you know, the city council uh? For six months?
Uh we don't have any plan, um I think what the next focus, I think we will probably have a study session on. Just just with the planning, since we received the direction from the joint meeting. I think we'll be working on the process um. To uh item uh with the, just with the planning commission, so we do a study session before we actually. You know, as we get partway into grabbing the ordinance, then we'll do a study session. Uh we'll respond to some of the the kind of questions that came up, like how many applications would this affect, how would it affect that, so we'll have. That type of information, um so I think kind of a long way around, so your answer to your question is. Um I we don't have any plan as as down, I think, we're gonna try and work with just with. Planning mission on that, the next. Process ordinance.
Okay, great, so another multiple per month, yeah. Yeah, that, it's a shit. Okay, so everyone who's moved sit down, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, um I have ten comments from members of the office. We do not, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, great, yes, to our January sixteenth meeting, uh we do have a uh spoken meeting on the Tampran environmental impact.
Item, so should be an interesting, so at the joint meeting, I have to refuse myself because of. Strada, I didn't realize they were one of the personal person or a client. Do I need to see um guidance from the city attorney about future meetings on this?
I think that would be, yeah, okay, that would be, yeah, that would be wise, I mean, like you will, well. Will always be there, thank you.